Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, August 27, 2018. We do have a special session tonight, which will be followed then by several committees that will be meeting. So our first item of business is to establish a quorum. All members of council are here tonight. So we'll now move on to ordinances for third reading. The first one is 8818. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue One funds. To execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember McGee.
I think I need a moment.
Okay. And these are for the improvements to Richland Avenue.
Okay. I apologize. I was not given the order of the ordinances. We have discussed this. Basically, the council is just asking that some money be approved so that we can apply for additional money. We're actually just submitting an application to participate in the process. So whether you're for or against the ultimate question of what will be happening for that particular street, I think it's appropriate to ask to submit the application and to ask that those funds be granted. So I believe this is the third reading, and I would move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. And I believe if this is as before, we will have an abstention from Councilmember Kotzis.
That is correct. And just to remind everybody, because I am a property owner on Stimson Avenue, I am not participating in anything related to the street improvements that are coming forward in 2020.
Okay. We have motion and second for approval of this. Do we have any other additional comments or questions from councilmembers or the mayor?
No.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, all those in for approving 8818, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next ordinance is 9318, and this is an ordinance declaring vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nasly. At this moment, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 9318.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, this is an opportunity for the city to release themselves of vehicles that are no longer deemed for municipal purpose. They include a 97 Ford Crown Vic, a 2009 Ford Escape, a 2003 Chevy Impala, a 91 Ford F-150, and a 2005 Chevy Colorado. Many of them are in various disrepair or needing extensive fixits. And the city would like to move forward with moving on from those vehicles and disposing of them through either nonprofit organizations, auctioned, sealed bid, trade-in, or sell for scrap. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to approve this ordinance, and I believe we have a comment from Mayor Patterson.
Council did ask me a while ago what the issue was with the Ford Explorer, or the Ford Escape, excuse me, in particular, the miles only having 60,000, and I really say that gingerly, the word "only." This used to be the police chief's cruiser, which had a lot of add-ons onto this vehicle. The vehicle is in pretty poor shape and difficult to maintain. A lot of it is electrical problems with the vehicle itself, and so therefore, it's just, it's not cost-effective to try and chase down what the problems are with this particular vehicle. It has been driven pretty hard in the past, so it's time to dispose of that particular vehicle, along with the others that are on your list as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
We now have ordinances for second reading. A few of these tonight will be suspended, and one of them, I do believe, also needs to be amended, so there'll be a series of votes on these. The first one is 9418, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Hocking College for Law Enforcement Assistance, introduced by Councilmember Butler. Ordinance 9518 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for sign replacement on U.S. Routes 33 and 50 and State Route 682 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 9618 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Drive, Ohio, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nasly, at this moment, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 9618.
Second.
And the reason is, we have a deadline at the end of this month that we need to get this passed.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nasly, at this moment, I would like to adopt ordinance 9618.
Second.
And this is, once again, this is something we've seen a lot actually coming through in the paper, so it seems like there's a lot of interest talking about this. This is for a becoming a test, having a test loop within the city of Athens, looking at a driverless vehicle. Now, there would be somebody stationed on the vehicle, so don't start to think that we're starting to make the streets more dangerous in this process. Additionally, this is just showing that this is our intent. I saw here recently, the mayor was starting to have some discussions with both Ohio University and HAPCAP on this subject. So like I said before, the city is still hashing out the details of what this would actually look like, and Drive, Ohio is doing the same thing, too. So if we do want to participate, we do have to show our intent. But moving forward, we will see additional new legislation to really explain exactly what we have signed up for.
Okay. Yes. So we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
I would just like to comment, I think this is a very good project, and I'm in favor of applying for the money and the possible grant, but I would urge the city, if at all possible, if there are any other grants to apply for some sort of grant that would do a citywide interlock system. We have a system in our country where we advocate allowing drinking and driving, and yet, nobody knows how much that is. And I see often, I see young people whose lives are ruined by having OVI charges filed against them. So again, I would emphasize this is a totally separate thing, I realize it, but if there are any grants available for interlock systems for people to use to be at a reduced rate or some affordable rate, I think that would be a very good thing for the city of Athens to go forward on. Thank you.
And Mayor Patterson, did you have any comments?
Just that I did mention to council last Monday that Director Robert Hetty and I went to a Drive, Ohio Alliance meeting up in Marysville, which was very educational for me, as it was for Bob. And one of the things I just wanted to mention to council, which was a little bit surprising in a positive way to me, was that there were several mentions about Athens during that meeting from the Director for Drive, Ohio, as well as other ODOT officials there. So, Member Kotzis, you're spot on in that we are certainly being looked at as a potential test site, and it's kind of exciting to see if this particular shuttle loop, if it does come to fruition, that we're able to become a test site within the state of Ohio. The big move for Drive, Ohio is that all of Ohio becomes kind of the epicenter for autonomous, not only autonomous vehicles, but unmanned autonomous aircraft as well. Some of the conversation was very Jetson to me, but makes perfect sense in that they were talking that there is industry out there that is looking at unmanned aircraft taxi service, which again, if that's a reality, I see a huge benefit to the city of Athens, and not just the city of Athens, but other rural communities when it comes to connecting us to some of the larger metroplexes throughout the state. So more to come on that. Thank you, council, for certainly, in earnest, looking at this piece of legislation.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and second now for approval. And are there any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay. We'll vote now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9718 is an ordinance designating the Stewart McDonald Building located at 21 North Schaefer Street as a local historic designation, and this is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you. I'd like to propose that we amend this ordinance.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to add four whereas's. Whereas the building is significant due to the growth and development of the city of Athens, and whereas the building has exemplary architectural features that as a matter of city policy are desired to be preserved, and whereas the owners of 21 North Schaefer Street are committed to preserving the building, and whereas Athens City Council and the city administration want to retain existing businesses in the city. Those will be put after the original whereas.
Okay. So we do have a motion now to amend with these four clauses added to the ordinance. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers on this, on just the vote to amend? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. The ordinance has been amended then and read for the first time.
I would also like to follow on with announcing that September 17, at 7:00, is the public hearing for this particular designation.
Okay.
Right here, before the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Ordinance 9818 is an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of an agreement with the Athens City Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the City of Athens Police and Lieutenants concerning wages and working conditions, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Does the administration require this to be suspended, or should we just do it?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the second reading. You don't have anything to add to it.
Okay. Ordinance 9918, which will require suspension, I think, is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance, and introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for 9918.
Second.
The reason for suspension is that the auditor would like to have these funds encumbered and appropriated as soon as possible, since the checks have already arrived.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember.
I move for adoption of 9918.
Second.
We read this last week. It's, well, it's fairly simple. We received some refund check from the Bureau of Workman's Compensation for $267,780. These monies need to go immediately into their proper account lines and then be encumbered. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions from council or administration? Any questions from the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We have two resolutions, one of which we'll read for a second time, one of which we've learned from since last week that we can go ahead and vote on. So the first one we will read only. This is Resolution 718, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And then Resolution 818, which is the one that we can vote on tonight, is the city of Athens strongly urges the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to invest the state budget surplus in municipalities. And this is a one-reading resolution, which is why we're going to go ahead and vote on that. And it's introduced by all members of council. And is there someone wishing to speak to this?
Member Paul.
For me, this is about local control. I think that the city should fully back this resolution. Currently, our local government funds have been cut year after year after year, though we are committed to providing services for about, like, health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, and it gets harder and harder, especially in Athens, because other monetary lines have also been destroyed by Columbus, meaning the Impact Bees and some of the other things that helped Athens because we're unique. The city is requesting the surplus that's in the rainy day fund be given back to the municipalities, because we are the economic engine of the city, of the state.
Thank you. So is that a motion then to approve?
Please.
Okay. Do I have a second, please?
You want me to read the ordinance?
It's up to you.
Can I read one comment?
Yeah.
This was an email that was sent to me by Member Crowell, based upon an interview with the New York Times to Governor Kasich, who shared his perspective of how he feels municipalities are responding to the cuts in revenue and other changes that have depressed the collection of revenues locally. Quote, "We have a constant whining from local governments. They want handouts. They want it to be easy." Yeah, you're damn right, I want. I want the money that they're taking from us, and I want it to come back here. Now, I don't know what's so wrong with that, but apparently Columbus feels it's theirs. And once it's theirs, it's no longer ours. I want that money back. There's a lot of projects that we need to get done around here, and we cannot continually raise taxes on our community to cover these shortfalls.
So we have a motion.
I have a motion.
I do need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have several seconds. Are there any other comments? Okay. I'll call for the vote then. Or any other comments from the audience or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. This motion carries and the resolution is approved. And we finished with the readings of these ordinances that we needed to in the special session tonight. I thank you for your patience and us taking care of this business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, we are adjourned with the special session portion at 7:20 PM.
That's a record.
And for purposes of timeliness, we're going to move right on into committee meetings. We do have Committee of the Whole, and then Planning and Development and Transportation. I do have an update for you, though, to let you know that there will not need to be, there's no need for the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting tonight. For our Committee of the Whole, we have two presentations, one from the Wayne National Forest and some interested community members, and then a group from planning, family planning from Planned Parenthood. And so two totally very different issues, but two very important ones, and we're all concerned. I'm going to do a real brief, since some of the persons here tonight haven't been here to present, but I do see a former councilmember here with us tonight, so I know she's familiar with the rules. But it's always a good reminder for me, it will take a minute, and then everybody's heard our rules about them. And this is Rule Number 14 on the Public Speaks. When any person is about to address the council, he or she shall request permission from the president of council. No debate, disrespectful, or obscenity shall be tolerated. President of council shall rule any such individual out of order. And we've rarely had that happen, by the way. Citizens shall be permitted to speak only one time at each regular session of council. Each speaker shall identify him or herself by name, home address, and acknowledge any affiliation, which is what Councilmember McGee often asks us. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, with a limitation of 15 minutes imposed on the total amount of time allowed on the topic, which shall include all of the participation by the councilmembers, elected officials, and administrative representatives, unless permission to extend the time has been granted by the president of council. Councilmembers, other officials, and administrative representatives shall not debate public speakers, and shall only answer questions as directed by the president of the council. And I know that both of the issues that we have here tonight, as I've said, you know, are close to the hearts of many in our community, and we're not attempting to solve the problems tonight, but we regard this certainly as an opportunity to face challenging times and opportunities, too. And it's a chance for some interchange and a chance for councilmembers to learn more. So we appreciate you being here tonight, and we'll work our way through this. So our first presentation is from Mr. Tony Scardina of the Wayne National Forest, and so we'll try and work within the confines of his presentation, and then an opportunity for councilmembers and the mayor to ask any questions after you've done your presentation. Thank you, and welcome.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me, and I wanted to thank the council for having us tonight. And it's good to know that members of the public locally are interested in the Wayne National Forest. It's an important asset locally and regionally, and I look forward to updating you what we call our forest plan revision process. It's a complex process. It takes several years for us to work through, so tonight will be our goal of just getting you the information of what the steps of the process are, where the different opportunities are, as well as regulations which require us to work closely with local governments through that process. So I'll go through this, and we can get to questions at the end. So every time I start to talk about forest plan revision, I always get a little bit of context. As you can see on the map, the green on the map is the National Forest System, which is part of the Department of Agriculture. It covers 193 million acres nationwide and includes 155 national forests, and the Wayne is one of those, which is the only national forest in Ohio, and consists of about 250,000 acres that are separate land bases that go from Marietta to Athens to Ironton, and those three land bases are kind of separated apart from one another. Just in terms of national forests, we are different than the National Park Service, which is under the Department of the Interior. We have more of a multiple-use mission, so you can look at some of our original legislation that talks about securing favorable water flows. If you look at that map from the back, you can see a lot of national forests were established around major watersheds in the United States to protect them in the late 1800s and early 1900s, when there was a lot of degradation to those landscapes, and the agency was looking at protecting water flows throughout the country. They also had a mission around providing timber to the country during the development era in the early 1900s and through the world wars. The national forests and the timber associated with it was a key asset nationwide for home building, for construction of materials, and that was a part of our original legislation. In the '60s, Congress changed that mandate and actually expanded it to look at all the natural resources that are on the landscape of public lands, from recreation to wildlife to forest management, to invasive species, to energy development. So all of those things are things that we look at on the landscape of the Wayne National Forest, and it's part of our mandate. We have a multiple-use mission. It talks about being able to provide sustained use of the resources of the landscape. And so when people look at us versus the Park Service, that is a big difference. You have the national parks, which are there for untrammeled landscapes, for people to recreate and view and see those national treasures, where national forests have more of a use mandate in providing different types of resources, to try to find a balance for everyone on that landscape, which can be quite difficult, as you guys know. Forest plan revision. So forest plan revision is a process mandated by the National Forest Management Act that we go through every 10 to 15 years. Our last forest plan was developed in 2006, and so we're 10 years, 11 years down the road from that, and we decided to move forward with revising our plan. This is the area that we're looking at as we look at our plan. Yes, we only have the authority to manage national forest system lands within southeast Ohio, but that 250,000 acres is actually only 25% of the 17 forested counties in southeast Ohio. So it's important that we work with adjacent landowners, with other state agencies that have state forests and state parks. They all have similar issues, and as you know, things like invasive species and other threats don't tend to look at political boundaries, and so it's important for us to work with people all across that landscape. So we will only make management choices for the lands that we have jurisdiction over, but we'll look at that broader landscape in terms of what the impacts may be, how we work with other people in that landscape. So it's important to look bigger than just within the boundaries of the Wayne National Forest. As we go through that process, we're working with other state agencies, such as the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. They have divisions as well, Division of Wildlife, Division of Recreation, Division of Forestry, and they have plans. And so our goal is to try and have our plans communicate better together in terms of their goals and objectives, and at times in the past, our planning efforts haven't always been in sequence. And it's important, too, to know what local government plans may be for recreation, for other social benefits, to look at what you all are thinking about and how that may relate to some of the things that we're thinking about. If you're wanting to look at where the laws and regulations are that pertain to forest plan revision, you can go to our website. I tell people, if you kind of want to be a student, you can look at the National Forest Management Act. There's also the 2012 Planning Rule. That's kind of the heart of the regulations that we follow through this process. And like I said, you'll see requirements for public involvement, requirements for working with local governments, working with tribes. So really, within our laws and regulations, it's not only our intent to work with other people, but it's mandated that we do so. So you can go to these places and find the heart of those laws and regulations. As we go through this process, there's been quite a change from the past. Our forest plans in the past, the last Wayne National Forest Plan, the decision on how to move forward was made by our regional forester. So our regional forester is in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. She has authority over the national forest system lands all the way from Missouri to Maine, which includes 15 national forests. The law changed that, and our planning regulations changed that. So in this process, I will be the decision-maker for the Wayne National Forest Plan. And we also have another process, which we call availability, related to the use of minerals underneath the Wayne that are owned by the United States. And so 60% of the minerals underneath the Wayne are actually privately owned, people that have beaded rights to those, and those are under a different process. 40% of the minerals underneath the Wayne are actually owned by the United States that we have the authority to manage and regulate. So in this process, it'll also be my decision which minerals to make available for leasing, for drilling, or extracting material, or to withdraw those. And then once we make that decision, if we allow them to move forward, there's another federal agency called the Bureau of Land Management that has some oversight when it comes to minerals owned by the United States. The forest plan revision process has a couple key steps, and so right now, we're in the first step, which they call the assessment phase. That was initiated in the Federal Register on April 19 of 2018. We have an internal team of specialists, from biologists to economists, an interdisciplinary team of experts, that put together information that help us move forward with other phases of the process. This first phase is really about what is different from our last plan, what has changed on the landscape, what has changed in our communities. That could be things like, in the past 10 years, we have a lot more information about the threats of climate change. We have a lot more threats on the landscape from different invasive species, like Emerald Ashbore. Those things have a change on the landscape, and so in this process, the key first step is what's different? Have people, are people recreating differently? Are they using the landscape differently? So it's really an assessment of data, research, and information about what has changed since our last plan, and that leads to then a identification of a need for change. So if we know that, for example, something has changed in the assessment phase, it'll then be highlighted in a document called the Need for Change. The second phase of the process is what they call plan development, where we see those areas where there's a need for change, or where there's different information, we start to develop new plans on how to deal with that. And we're required by the law to look at a range of alternatives. We may have an issue that we manage one way, and we may have an alternative to managing that, and the public will be engaged in that process of helping develop our plan. Our goal, once we work on that, will probably be to draft a proposal so the public has something to work off of. You know, for us, it's how do you take 250,000 acres and manage it over 15 years? So we think it'll be helpful to take the assessment and then take that information, put together a draft so that people have something to react to, because I think it'll be difficult for people to just do that from a blank slate. Once we have a range of alternatives to look at, then we run it through what we call the environmental analysis process. It's another process called the National Environmental Policy Act. We will do an environmental impact study, which is required by the law for forest plan revision, which will look at all the social, economic, and environmental impacts of any alternative that we're considering. It'll look at the positive benefits of those actions that we propose. It'll look at the negative effects of any of the actions that we propose. And through that process, there are required by law, public comment opportunities. And through that process, there are required by law, public comment opportunities, and there's also going to be lots of other ways that we engage the public in that process. So as I mentioned, we initiated the process in April of 19, and you can see, we're focused at this point on working with the public, government agencies, and NGOs on what is current condition of the landscape, what has changed from 2006, and the areas of things that are ecological, social, and economic. We have 15 different elements that we look at, and those elements touch those broad categories of ecological changes, social changes, and economic changes. So our next step's what we've done to try and help the public with some recent communication that they needed a little bit clearer timeline, as well as simplified information, is we put together a one-page sheet that's on your desk called What You Need to Know, and we have made some changes to our timeline. Recently, there was some communication that we were trying to have the public give us information by August 30th, and some thought that might be a deadline. Not only is that not a deadline, we've also extended our process. So our goal is, in February of 2019, to release what they call a draft assessment. So it won't be final, it'll be an opportunity to say, here's the information that we've collected, here's what we think has changed. Do you think we missed something? And then there'll be an official 45-day public comment period for people to say, you missed something, you didn't get something right, or hey, you hit it on the mark, which we hope, but I'm sure we'll end up missing something in a complex process. So what we're going to do at this point in time is ask for people to continue. If you have information related to the 15 elements that we've outlined to the public several months ago, please continue sending us that information, whether that's opinions of information, whether that's data, whether that's research. We're also working with the universities locally, experts in given fields like forest management, and fire, and energy development, and recreation, to try and get that information now. But again, if people don't have the time to engage at this point, they'll have the opportunity to look at that draft and have a 45-day period to tell us if we missed anything. We will then, probably in May and June of 2019, put out a final assessment and a final Need for Change. And once that phase is done, then we'll start working with people on developing alternatives for a new plan. We're estimating that's probably going to take about eight to 10 months to basically come up with options for addressing the areas where we saw a need for change, work with the public through that, and then probably another eight to 10 months to start the NEPA process and do the environmental impact statement. During the environmental impact statement, there's three periods for people to engage by law. There's a 60-day public comment period at the beginning of that process. Once we get that information, we then put out a draft environmental impact statement, which is the same kind of question, did we miss something? Did our analysis not disclose the impacts accurately? And there's a 90-day official public comment period for that, and then we'll have a 60-day public comment period for those who participated earlier to look at what my draft decision may look like. I'll basically signal, here's where I think I'm going to head, and people have a 60-day period to object to that, and then the regional forester in Milwaukee kind of works with people to see if I missed something, so there is a layer of oversight in that decision-making process. Beyond that, there's ample opportunity for people to get the information once a month, or two calls a month, the first Wednesday of each month, at noon and at 7 o'clock, people can just pick up the telephone and get updates from Lori Swiderski. She's our forest plan team leader. We thought that would be an easy way for people to just get a quick update on where we're at in the process, how they can be engaged, and then obviously, on our website, there's opportunities for putting in electric public comments. You can mail comments to us, and you can also contact Lori directly, and she can answer any questions you have, and all that's outlined on this one-page cheat sheet for you. With that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. Yes, and so what we'll do is allow an opportunity, if any council member has a particular question to ask, we'll do one round of questions, trying to keep, you know, within a reasonable timeframe, and then we'll move on, because I know there's a group here that's interested in us being proactive, and that's kind of the reason they're here tonight, too, so, and then they'll follow with a presentation. So council members, does anybody have a -- Councilmember Grace? I'll just work right down the line, if you have a question. Okay, McGee?
One question. Have the -- I'm sorry. Has the land already been subject to leases for oil and gas rights? How is putting that?
We do have some parcels in the Marietta area that have been leased out. So every quarter, the areas that have been approved for leasing by the Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management, every four months, a number of acres go out. Those are notified to the public in advance, and then there's a bidding process online for industry that have interest in those parcels. So I can't remember the exact acreage. Over the past two years, I think somewhere around 2,000 or 3,000 acres have been leased. Those are 10-year leases, and then they expire in a 10-year period, and they're always, you know, they never change hands, they're always ownership of the United States. So we do that every quarter, and that's a Bureau of Land Management process that leases those out.
Okay. Let's work our way around.
Okay, it was just in connection with that, real quick.
Okay. 30 seconds.
Okay, just really quickly. Since you're doing this plan, I take it these leases are already active, putting out oil and gas?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cottis, any questions?
No, yes, thank you. I'll try to be as to the point and succinct as possible. You know, I participated in the 2006 process, and this is much different than what it was back then. You know, I think it was a few sessions of sitting down and filling out some comments and submitting them, and that was it. So, you know, I think that this process is much more in-depth, but, you know, from my position here, you know, the citizens that speak to me about this, they're worried about their water source, and I know that that's not, you know, and like you pointed out and painted that picture, that you have so many people, so many other entities, and other governments and other areas that you have to work with, that maybe that's not necessarily the issue that you're going to have in every community, but looking back at what the original Forest Service protecting the watersheds, headwaters, and, you know, I think that is something that I think is very important, and I just wanted to stress that to you tonight. The question that I have is, if you look at the George Washington National Forest, which is a forest that I've recreated in quite a bit, so I'm very familiar with it and have enjoyed it on many occasions, and they have basically eliminated fracking as an option within that forest. Now, I know that they are also now working in the process of bringing a pipeline, both through the Monongahela and the George Washington, so I know there's other challenges, and I know that the forest motto currently, right now, is land of many uses. But how does a forest like that reach that decision when we have members here that are, you know, community members that are looking for a similar type of outcome, and maybe this doesn't even have anything to do with the forest revision plan? Please educate me.
I know, it's a good question, and some members of the public that I've talked to bring that up as an example, so, you know, one thing I'm going to do is take more time looking into what were the variables that led to that outcome? Was it collaboration among many local governments? You know, there had to have been some form of scenarios that led to that outcome that, you know, that I'm interested in finding out more about. We also know of forests in the West that got to that point as well. So, you know, for us in this process, I wouldn't say that we're starting from a blank slate. We've been managing the Wayne since 1935, and we know what issues are there, but I'd say we're going to stay open-minded and let the facts and data kind of lead us one step at a time, and then I think in that alternative development process, the communities, their leadership, their elected officials and others have to speak out in an effective way, bring that to our process, and not look at it as providing input and comment doesn't mean anything. And I know that's easy to say, I know people have been engaging these and feel like they get no response, but we're going to try and do our best to be responsive and see what people bring to the table, so we'll look into that more, and maybe I can, you know, do some further research and get that back to the council, so you guys maybe can connect with people over there in Virginia, if you have a similar interest in finding out what they did.
Good, okay. Councilmember Paul?
Thank you. I have some issues, and I know many people have issues out in the community about transparency and between the rules that are governing this sort of process, but also the data that is used in the whole process. Is there going to be transparency of data that is collected on the old management plan? And before, like, February or May, is there going to be updates on looking and assessing the management plan that was done, and where you guys succeeded and where you didn't, and is that could be publicly available?
Yes. So our team's working on kind of a framework right now where it's easier to display that, because right now, if you look at our 2006 plan, it's 400 pages, and your eyes glaze over quickly. So I think our goal is going to be to provide a format that's easy for people to break down the plan, because our team has to do the same thing. We've got to break it down and say, what has changed in a very orderly way? And then, we did have a website, and we ran into some federal government snafus around cybersecurity, so we're working on a new webpage now where we can have a good record, where people can see by issue that we're working on, what data we're using, what research we're using, as well as the public put data and research that they have found related to those topics into that system, so that we're receiving it as well. So that information will be there, and for the council and members of the public, if there is ever a time where you feel like something isn't being transparently disclosed, tell us that and let us know. There's sometimes we park something in a record, and you can't find it, and there's other times we do better, so just let us know that.
And is the data that you collect going to be peer-reviewed at some point?
Yes, yeah.
Who is the peer-review for?
Well, our process in looking at, if it's fresh data that has been collected by someone, we'll have to figure out what to do with it. Normally, we're trying to use already peer-reviewed data, science, and research. Some of it may be data that we have collected within our agency under a certain protocol. But I think if it's fresh data and someone hands it to us, we'll have to figure out what to do to review that information for accuracy. If it's already peer-reviewed within a publication or journal, we'll know it's valid work, so we'll work through that if someone submits data that we haven't seen before.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Reisler. My comments are reflected in the comments that have already been made. In terms of transparency of data, I hear you talk about evaluating economic, environmental, and social impacts, and I'm wondering about the transparency of the data of how you do that analysis, and so we can see the life cycle costs associated with the different impacts of what's happening to the forest, and so I hope the final report is truly transparent in looking at all three of those things. And then my second comment is simply, I believe you said there was a 10- to 15-year requirement to update the plan? Can it be done more quickly if the Forest Service decided four years from now they wanted to do it again? Might that happen, or?
It could be, but it's rare. You know, the law says about 10 to 15 years. There are actually national forests in the West that are working on 20, 25, 30-year-old plans, and so there is a funding cycle from our headquarters to help those forests pay to go through that process, and so they're high priority right now. One of the reasons the Wayne is moving forward is because we have this unique relationship with the state of Ohio to see if we can make our plans more compatible, which is kind of a national pilot to do that, so that's really one of the reasons we've been given a green light. I don't decide on my own to revise, it's actually part of a national decision-making process that's related to national funding to go through that process, so probably not. You'll probably see it more in that 10- to 15-year timeframe as more of a usual.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reisner?
One thing that kind of concerns me is not so much the process that's going to go on here, from what I can see here, it's, it looks good on paper, and the idea that people can contribute and add their opinions to it can only help, but my biggest worry is that somewhere, after all this is done, and whatever the results are, that somewhere in Washington, higher up the food chain, someone is going to make a decision, say, you know, I really don't like that, it's just not, it doesn't square with my political views of, right now, and I want it changed. Can that happen?
Maybe.
I'm reassured.
It's my job as a forest supervisor to be in step with our Washington headquarters, so I communicate with my director and my chief to see what are some of the issues that are of national perspective or interest, and understand those. So, yeah, it is a national agency, it is a national forest with national interests, so for me to say there couldn't be influences like that, maybe that's not true. My approach is working through facts and data. We have to do an environmental impact study that's based on experts in their field putting information, so when it comes to the data that we're using, the economic, social, and environmental impacts of that, to me, that's a scientific-based process, and we're going to go through that. In the decision-making process, I feel like the Planning Rule has given me the authority to do that, and I feel like, in most cases, I'll have the ability to try and find common ground and make decisions that reflect the community's perspectives, as well as the Forest Service, but it's always a tough balance in a large agency, that's a federal agency as well, so we'll work through that as we go through it.
Thanks. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. Last but not least, thank you for being here. I appreciate your presence, as well as your colleague Lori, and it's very helpful and meaningful for us to have this dialogue, so thank you. Would you kindly be able to list or share with us again your number, your office number, as well as the email that is beneficial for us to communicate with?
Yeah, right on this one-page sheet, down in the bottom left, is the email, and when you send it to that, Lori's going to see it right away.
Okay, thank you.
And then her direct phone number is there.
Okay.
And then, if you all need to contact me directly, it's 740-753-0880.
0?
0880.
Thank you. And then my question and/or comment is, first of all, to share with you that we have to take an oath of office to be present here, sitting, and do our job, and I'm very mindful of that, and sincerely consider the safety and welfare of our citizens. It's paramount, and so along those lines, I can't stress enough, clean air and clean water. So if that's the message you want to take back to Washington, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. And Mayor, did you have any question?
You know, I echo a lot of what was said tonight from City Council, and in particular, something that Member Crowell brought up. You know, let's be real, that, you know, in this day and age, climate change isn't going at a glacial speed, it's actually going at almost the speed of light, it seems, and with that, the ability for you to be able to go back and do reviews that are sooner than 10, 15, 15 to 20 years, again, in a period when we need more, you know, we need data more quickly, and we need to sit there and re-review what's going on at a faster pace, and I want to echo something that Member Cottis brought up. You know, my father was a watershed manager for the U.S. Forest Service for many years when I was a child, and I know the value of safe, secure water supplies, because they're city killers. You know, if your water supply goes bad, you're done, and, you know, that's one of the things that I hope is at the forefront when it comes to managing, you know, going through this process. You know, for me, gas extraction just doesn't sit well with me, nor does injection wells, for that matter, so, you know, I hope that all of these are issues that are really worked through. I know we have people here tonight who, I'm assuming are going to speak to that effect, but again, you know, I'm a scientist, and I get it. You know, climate change is real. You know, it's not some myth out there that some people would like you to believe, and Tony, I don't think that you believe that either, although I can't speak for you, so anyway. I think that this is something, too, that we do need to get up on the city's website. When I say this, I'm speaking to, let me scroll to the top of this real quick, the Wayne National Forest Plan Revision, What You Need to Know. So this one pager that you've got, this is something that we should have up on the city's website, so people have the phone numbers that they know they can call to be involved in the process as well.
Scott's nodding yes, he will get it up on the government channel.
Thank you, Scott, our trusty government channel executive.
Okay.
That's all I have, President Reisler.
And we're going to be driving around as well, getting them around, pinned up at local businesses, so people can start getting that information easier, and I just want to say, you know, I'm a scientist in several fields as well, and, you know, these impacts are of concern to us, and we're going to take them serious. We have a complex mission that we try to find a balance to, but in terms of the impacts, the science behind it, we agree. There are some real concerns on that landscape, and we've been trying to deal with them, from invasives to acid mine drainage, things that we've been working on for decades, and we're behind the curve, and we need to start catching up, so we appreciate that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, and we're going to try and stick to the time limit, and so if we've got other comments or questions, we'll bring them up later.
I would love to just clear the air about one thing, and since Mr. Scardina is here, I'm sorry, but my understanding is there would never be an injection well on Wayne National Forest property. Is that?
It's not in our current plan, and, you know, that's not something we usually authorize. The only thing we would have to pay attention to is if there are privately-owned minerals, like I said, there's 60% of the minerals underneath us are privately-owned. Our ability to manage and regulate those are difficult, so I'm not saying never, because there are certain scenarios where that may be complex, but at least in terms of minerals owned by the United States, we But at least in terms of minerals owned by the United States, we haven't, and I don't see that happening as we move into the future.
Okay, great. All right. So what we'll do now, I know Heather Cantino is here and several other people, and I thank Mr. Scardina for sticking to his 10, 11 minutes. So you'll have 10 or 11 minutes, and then we'll be able to have a round of questions from council members. It was, it's always best late plans to try and stick to 15 minutes total, but I know it doesn't work. So, thank you, Heather, and welcome. And if you could give us your name, address, and group that you represent.
Heather Cantino, 33 Cable Lane, Athens. And I represent ACFAN and Buckeye Environmental Network, which is the new name for Buckeye Forest Council. Thank you, President Nisley, and council, for offering the community this time to share our concerns with the Wayne planning process. We hope you will weigh in soon, as we are doing now, before the team produces a preliminary draft for a new plan, to which we will then only be able to react. In the past, vehement and voluminous community opposition to Wayne proposals has generally not made an iota of difference in Wayne management practices. They have recently asked for comments on what must be changed from the 2006 plan. I sent you all the economic analysis of that plan commissioned by Hartwood with support from Sierra Club and Buckeye Forest Council. The report is a scathing indictment of the 2006 plan, which allows extensive logging, inappropriate burning, and ATV expansion at the expense of the forest and of the valuable ecosystem services, including air and water purification, climate stabilization, and low-impact recreation that it could be better providing. We have reason to expect that the new plan will continue and even ramp up logging. One example of mismanagement and spin created by the current Wayne administration is the so-called Sunny Oaks Project, in which there are clear cuts where the wood is then sold to the timber industry. Mature oaks are being cut to create room for new, young seedling oaks. Logging the national forest is done to serve the timber industry and does not benefit the local economy, contrary to Forest Service PR. Timber is sold cheap, and meanwhile, the forest's provision of climate stabilization, air and water purification, protection of interior forests, of which there's very little on the Wayne because it is so fragmented, as that map didn't show very well because it was such a large scale, and low-impact recreation are degraded. In fact, ecosystem services are much more valuable per acre per year, valued in a New Jersey State study at an average of $1,800 per acre per year compared to 400 for forest extraction products. These figures cited in the economic analysis of the Wayne plan that you have are old and don't fully account for the current value of carbon sequestration, air and water purification, and interior forests in increasingly compromised environments. The U.S. Forest Service is required by congressional mandate to manage the forest to provide a net public benefit. Multiple use does not mean you can have no benefit. You can have negative benefit based on having costs to the American public of taking out your forests and degrading your air, water, and other ecosystem services. In these times of rapidly escalating global climate breakdown and compromised air, water, and public health, leaving the forest alone to provide ecosystem services must be the focus of forest planning. Please study the economic analysis and its recommendations, which explain how dangerous, unscientifically based, and duplicitous the 2006 Wayne plan is and why it must be abandoned. The Wayne must adopt a new plan appropriate for the 21st century, one based on ecological principles of forest management, to protect the forest's carbon sequestration and other essential services, and to protect our community's economic, environmental, and public health as required by public law. We hope you will tell the Wayne to prioritize ecological management, to provide the highest value to the American public for the critical coming decades. We ask that you also state opposition to a plan that allows commercial logging, ATV expansion, and widespread use of prescribed burning at the expense of the forest's higher-valued ecosystem services. We also have reason to be extremely concerned that the Wayne intends to authorize fracking in its new plan. The 2000 plan did not evaluate fracking, which the current Forest Administration later authorized without any analysis to comply with National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, requirements. The Forest Service consented to the BLM to conduct the now ongoing lease sales without any NEPA-based analysis, let alone an environmental impact statement in EIS, the rigorous study required for any action that may have significant impacts on the forest and on the surrounding community. This consent was given in spite of thousands of appeals by the public, including several from council and the city of Athens, beginning in 2011, and after many years of meetings, letters, and many thousands of petition signatures opposing fracking the Wayne. By the way, I will give you the copy of this with a summary that I'm not even going to get to of all our asks. The Forest Service must now, with its new plan, do an EIS on fracking, which by federal law must take into account up-to-date science and public concerns. Such a study must address climate impacts, water consumption, air and water contamination, destruction of rural land and communities, health, and economic impacts, not just the benefits of fracking to landowners and the industry. And another thing that must be considered is the production of the high volumes of radioactive toxic waste, which are currently being injected into our county at the rate of hundreds of millions of gallons a year. And to me, it's irrelevant whether there are injection wells on the Wayne. The fact that the Wayne is producing that frac waste, which is then externalized, the costs are having to be borne by the community residents in our county is abhorrent. The Wayne must document all potential immediate, long-term, and cumulative impacts, both from Wayne fracking permits and from the other fracking and waste, transportation emissions, and oil and gas infrastructure, including pipelines and compressor stations, that its permitting will produce on the wider landscape. We hope that you will call on the Wayne to conduct an EIS in fracking that abides by the intent of NEPA and meaningfully assess its full costs, as required by NEPA. We have just learned that the Wayne has contracted with Marietta College's Department of Petroleum Geology to assess impacts of fracking. Needless to say, this does not leave us very, this leaves us very concerned about the Wayne's intent to evaluate the true costs of fracking to the public and the forest. Certainly, Marietta College is not going to evaluate the costs of fracking to our community. Because an EIS must fully assess public concern, we hope you will also call on the Wayne to count all petition signatures that have been submitted since 2011 and other statements of opposition to fracking that have been delivered as unique voices of opposition to leasing. We cannot, in these few months, recreate all of the opposition that we know is out there. They, it is, they have it on file and they must consider it now, which they've never considered seriously in the past. I also sent you a few of the many peer-reviewed research articles that we are submitting to the Wayne. They illustrate the kind of research the Wayne must consider and respond to. We hope you'll urge the Wayne to fully evaluate and respond to all documentation submitted by the public, giving equal weight to critics as to that given to those with financial ties to the Wayne and to the oil and gas industry. And I just want to mention, one of the studies, in case you didn't get to look at it, it talks about the effect of forests clearing on local climate. So it's not just a matter of global climate, but it actually, clearing forests actually has an impact on maximum and mean temperatures in the region. I also sent another on the soil carbon emissions that result from deforestation and land clearing, and another on air pollution, and how forests do protect air, which is, of course, especially in the Marietta unit where all these leases have been given consent to under Tony's mandate. Marietta is the worst area in this region, as far as I know, and should, that needs to be taken into account next time around. And Roxanne will speak to the precedence for the Wayne to be able to say no to any further fracking. Thank you.
Okay. And do you want to, you've got about two or three minutes left. Roxanne, do you think?
Okay.
Okay.
Roxanne Groff, Marietta Run Road, Amesville, Ohio. I think this is the first time I've ever addressed the consulates.
Welcome.
Kind of neat.
Welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening, and I'll be quick because what I want to address is what Councilmember Crowell made, asked the question about transparency, and Councilman Cottas talked about the George Washington National Forest. So I want to focus on, and you have information, I sent the records of decision that were made by each of the regional forests, by either their regional forester, as in in the case of Bridger Teton, their district ranger, and signed off on by the undersecretary of agriculture in 2017. As Supervisor Scardina said, this is a very complicated process. And in order to make it easier for the public to understand, I think it's important for the public to understand that the discretionary authority lies within the district office, the regional office. Supervisor Scardina and his supervisor, Kathleen Atkinson, the regional forester of Region Nine, have the authority to withdraw available lands that are from the 2006 plan that can be leased for oil and gas exploration. The records of decision that were done in the Bridger Teton National Forest in Wyoming and the George Washington National Forest in Virginia and West Virginia, both of those forest districts did up-to-date revisions based on the fact that there was an overwhelming opposition to oil and gas leasing in both of those forest districts. The final decision was made to withdraw some of the available lands in the Bridger Teton Wyoming National Forest, and all of the available lands that had not already been leased or privately held in the George Washington National Forest. This is, this is something that has been brought up through the entire process from 2011 to make and support all lands available for leasing within the Wayne National Forest. And there's been confusion in the public as to who actually can make that decision and if it can be made. So as Heather said, there is precedence for that to happen, and some of the focus of many of us is going to be to oppose any additional leasing and to take lands that have been made available and make, pull them from that availability list and make them unavailable for oil and gas exploration. So that might answer your question, Peter, and maybe supplement your transparency issues.
Okay. And Christine, did you have something you wanted to present for a few minutes?
If you have one minute and a half.
Sure.
Thanks. Christine Hughes, 69 Grosvenor Street. I think you all got the letter that ACFAN has drafted that they're looking for people to sign on to. And when you look at the list of the businesses who have signed on to the letter encouraging scientific and ecologically aware planning for Wayne National Forest, you see innovative businesses that are built for growth in a healthy, thriving, regenerative, locally-focused economy. Little Fish Brewery, Bodhi Tree Guest House and Studio, Athens Impact Socially Responsible Investments. You see businesses that depend on sustainable Ohio farms, Bexley Natural Market, Chelsea's Real Food, Shag Bark Seed and Mill, Village Bakery and Catalyst Cafe, businesses that serve markets throughout Ohio and beyond, such as Appalachian Ohio Herb Clinic, Herbal Sage Tea Company, Appalachian Renewable Power, and Snowville Creamery. And especially farms that require clean, unspoiled environments for their plants and animals. Creekside Farm, Green Edge Gardens, and Laurel Valley Creamery. This is the kind of industry which attracts visitors and new residents to build our local economy and benefit the people who live and work here. At the same time, those who have signed on are just a sampling of businesses that will be negatively affected by increased industrial activity in the Wayne National Forest, including oil and gas drilling. My own restaurant has already lost at least two longtime suppliers, a farmstead cheesemaker and an organic vegetable farm, that were harmed by fracking infrastructure operating next to their sustainable farm businesses. Pipelines and frac waste facilities are hitting farmers I know especially hard. Ohio Ecological Food and Farming Association, the state's largest organization of small farms, has also signed on to the letter drafted by ACFAN because farmers know that increased fracking in the forest will work against the principles of OFA, more farmers raising more healthy food for more people on more Ohio farmland. And I'd like for Athens City Council to require the Wayne National Forest to calculate the net economic benefit its plan can contribute to the city of Athens, and to remember the economic costs that planned activities in the forest will subtract from Athens' appeal. Please encourage Wayne National Forest to allocate comparable resources to assessing the net economic benefits of non-destructive forest management activities as they are allocating to estimating income from industrial activities on public land in our forest. New science has demonstrated the urgent need for forest protection for global and even local climate benefits, as Heather's documentation has referenced. And Athens City Council has an opportunity to help Wayne National Forest recognize the true purpose of our forest at this critical time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. What we'll do is, I know we had three different presenters, and I will just quickly, I realize that not everybody may have questions with the second round through, but I'll give you an opportunity very quickly to do that. Councilmember Grace, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Gee?
Thank you.
Okay. Cottas?
Thank you.
Fall? Councilmember Fall?
I want to especially think, because you guys have been able to digest so much of this information. And I want to, I agree with a lot of what was being said about resilience. I think that it's important to document the resilience and the capacity for sequestration to global climate change. I think that that is an overarching concern, and with greater pressures, I think it should be a sole, one of the major planning parts of the new plan, along with protection of the regional water and air quality. I think that that's what you've been saying, is that's where our economic benefit is, and we've been trying to do that as council and as a city with a lot of our other plans, our sustainability plan, different types of recreation plans and monies that we have spent. And so I agree, and I want to emphasize, that sort of local economy has to be part of the whole process.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Crowell?
I just want to thank you, ladies, for coming today and speaking. I'm relatively new to council. I can't believe that I beat Ms. Groff to the chambers, but if that's accurate, I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Member Reisner, any questions?
Yeah, I think in part of your statements, you were mentioning the impact of ATVs and all-terrain vehicles in the Wayne as a negative. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very much. And there are other forests that have banned them because of their impacts on the wildlife, on introducing invasives, on fragmentation, and of course, on carbon emissions.
Suppose, this is what I'm getting to, is instead of ATVs, you did like mountain biking?
Well, they'd be less destructive. They are less destructive.
They are.
Yeah. I mean, the trails are much smaller, there's less impact if the trails are maintained, and there aren't the carbon emissions.
And then you have the benefit of.
And you don't have the noise.
Exactly.
And you educate people about the forests, and you get people into the forests who wouldn't necessarily get into the forests.
So that'd be a net asset.
Well, I, you know, I think it needs to be studied closely. I think there are people who, you know, don't think there are too many trails in straws. I mean, I think trail building in general is something that needs to be more closely looked at.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Butler?
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Mayor Patterson, do you have any questions or comments?
No, other than thank you for coming. I think it was really interesting to hear about the impact of clearcutting on smaller microclimates, what it can do to a city or a community. Something I think a lot of people aren't aware of, their default becomes global warming, not necessarily community warming.
You know, I live on Cable Lane, just half a mile from East State, and there's sometimes a 10-degree difference between the valley I live in and East State with all the concrete. So it's significant what forests can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for the information. All right. And if there aren't any other comments, I will give the opportunity, if there's anybody else in the audience who wants to comment, you could have three minutes on this topic. If not, we'll move on. Thank you so much. Our next topic is the Title IX National Plan. Our next topic is the Title IX National Family Planning Program. And Councilmember Grace has this.
Thank you, President Isley, members of council, and mayor. I sent out a draft of a resolution that is, I firmly believe the city of Athens should oppose the current Trump administration's proposed rule changes to Title X funding. And just for a little bit of background information, Title X provides funding for reproductive and contraceptive health care for low-income, uninsured, and underinsured individuals. And the proposed rule change would block the availability of federal funds to family planning providers like Planned Parenthood. It would curtail counseling and referral to abortion services by any Title X-funded providers. It would eliminate the current requirements that Title X sites offer a broad range of medically-approved family planning methods, non-directive pregnancy options, and counseling that includes information about prenatal care and delivery, adoption, and abortion. And it would direct new funds to faith-based and other organizations. This is relevant to us here because in Ohio, $8.7 million of Title X funding came to the state of Ohio. And 63% of all Title X patients in Ohio are served by Planned Parenthood. And in Athens County, Planned Parent is the only recipient of Title X funds. So if this proposed change goes through, Athens County, the only provider in our county that receives this funding, would lose their funding. Athens Planned Parenthood, in 2017, provided 283 pregnancy tests, 242 HIV tests, 115 cancer screenings, 2,637 STI infection tests, and treatment. And that last one is a critical piece of information. Athens County ranks fourth in the state of Ohio for the rate at which their newly diagnosed STIs. So this is a rapidly increasing problem for our county. And it is, to me, it's unfathomable that we would have the loss of this funding to our community at a time when it is so desperately needed. I am interested in this and have brought this forward. I was asked to by a member of our community, who I believe will also speak on this issue. But professionally, from a public health perspective, all dollars spent in reproductive health, the investments made in preventative care and screenings save seven times that amount. So from just a purely financial standpoint, it does not make sense to stop providing these services. Our community desperately needs the federal dollars to support these services. And personally, I've experienced what it is like to be denied health insurance, to not qualify for health insurance, and to be entirely reliant on services provided by Planned Parenthood just for routine health care, screenings, and preventative care. And I appreciate your consideration. And any questions? And Dr. Quinn, if you would like to speak for a moment?
Great. Thank you so much. Take the podium.
And if you could just give us your name, address, and the group you represent.
Sure. Thank you, President Isley. My name is Susan Quinn. My address is 8281 Rock Riffle Road here in Athens. I am a board member for Planned Parenthood of Greater Ohio. And I want to thank you, Sarah Grace, for offering to further this resolution for the council. And you covered some points very, very well. What I'll do is just unpack it, maybe underscore a few things that I think are very important and relevant for us. With regard to, oh, I'd like to recognize, if I may, I have a Generation Action volunteers here in those lovely pink t-shirts, and they're passing out some handouts for me because this is my first rodeo with city council, so forgive me. I didn't get handouts to you in advance, but have some great, great help here dispensing So as Sarah Grace said, Title X funds were passed under Richard Nixon in 1970 specifically for birth control, breast and cancer screenings, and testing and treatment for sexually transmitted diseases. It was specific for poor and underinsured. Put that next to the fact that Planned Parenthood clinics have been providing care for reproductive health care for the poor and underinsured for decades. For, in, I'm not sure, Athens County, I moved here in 1983 and there was a Planned Parenthood clinic then. So Planned Parenthood is well-established, well-respected, it gives very good medical care, and the populations that we serve are used to coming to us. So, under the guise of sending Title X funds to family planning clinics that don't offer abortion as an option or even mention abortion in a family, in a physician consult situation, it's running against the core value of Planned Parenthood because we firmly believe that women are entitled to the full complement of reproductive health services. We offer it in a respectful, nonjudgmental way. We make sure that they get the care they need. In effect, even though Planned Parenthood has never mentioned in this ruling from Health and Human Services in June, this proposed ruling, it is specifically targeted for Planned Parenthood clinics. So they will say that you can go to a city-county health board to get the services, no problem. We'll divert those funds to the city-county health board. I can tell you that our executive director, Jack Pepper, our medical commissioner, Dr. Dick Gaskell, have flatly said, "We don't have the capacity, or the resources, or the personnel to manage this segment of the population." And they have, in fact, authored a letter to that effect. And then there's one more thing, I'll follow up to Sarah Grace's great comments about sexually transmitted disease. I've had conversations with physicians at the Hudson Health Center, the OU Hudson Health Center, who, obviously, if you have symptoms, you're a new U student, you go to the health center. These doctors tell me, and I don't have a firm number, I didn't allow enough time to really get that data together, but at least two physicians at the Hudson Health Center have told me that students will not have an STD testing done there because then it's billed to their insurance, then the parents will see that they've had a test done for sexually transmitted diseases. So they won't have it done. We think they're coming to the Planned Parenthood clinic, which is why you'll see on your handout there, the STD rate is twice the billable office visit rate here in this county. And lastly, I'll say one more thing. The chlamydia rate, chlamydia can lead to infertility if it's not diagnosed soon enough. Chlamydia is one of the most pressing public health crises in young people between 20 and 24. The rate of chlamydia in Athens County is 50% higher than the state average in Ohio. So we have a lot of work to do. And the last thing we want to do is make it harder for OU students to come to Planned Parenthood and have an STD test done. So with that, I want to thank you for your kind attention. I'd like to encourage you to please support the resolution encouraging continued flow of Title X funds to any reproductive health service provider without any conditions on parent, on doctor-patient communication. And I'm willing to entertain questions.
Okay. Are there any questions that council members may have? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Just one question. I understand the national impact and the state impact on the loss of funding. What is the amount of funding Athens County receives?
Title X funds? You know, I can get that for you. I can tell you that it's $8.7 million to Ohio. And then our clinic sees, 40% of the patients that we see are Title X patients. But I don't know specifically how, what portion of the $8.7 million come to Athens It's been, a lot of these clinics, and there is a page in the auditors, there was a report that was authored by Megan Kilgore, who is the Columbus City Auditor, and Elizabeth Brown, who is a Columbus City Councilwoman. They co-authored this report, and they cited the economic impact. They really like backed up from health issues. They basically just looked at what happens when women can't remain in the workforce because of unplanned pregnancies or have to take time off to travel to just get primary care for reproductive services. What happens to the economic security of families? And I can get you that source if you're interested in it. But there's a very telling graph in this analysis from Megan Kilgore, who's a Columbus City Auditor, that shows Planned Parenthood clinics in the state of Ohio, and as Sarah Grace said, we're the only Title X provider in Athens. And I can't, I know you know better than I do, the poverty that surrounds Athens County. So we're not only having the highest poverty rate, but we're surrounded by very poor counties. So it's, the Planned Parenthood clinics in other larger counties are mostly in poorer areas. And it's one of the reasons why Planned Parenthood Board of Greater Ohio is very committed to keeping a Planned Parenthood clinic here in Athens because we're emblematic of serving poor, underserved women and families. But you know, a lot of the clinics in other larger towns are in, you know, the poorer communities because those are the patients that we serve.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And for being here. And thank you all, too, for being here. Thanks. Okay. And thanks for presenting, Sarah, on that information. That probably would be helpful for us to know that number that Councilmember McGee requested, the Title X funds. That would be useful.
I didn't find the Athens specific.
Okay. Mayor Patterson, did you have a comment or question?
I just want to say, you know, Member Grace, thank you for bringing this resolution forward. I think this is so vitally important because this is one more attempt to strip things away, and we're talking basic reproductive health care. And Dr. Quinn, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, the Athens clinic is like one of the only in southeastern Ohio.
It is the only Planned Parenthood clinic in all of southeastern Ohio. Now, you know, there are, there are Title X funds that go to other counties. However, as Sarah Grace said, we, Planned Parenthood clinics, our 19 clinics, get 63 of the Title X funds that are designated to Ohio. The remaining 37 go to 70 different clinic sites. So there's like trickles going into all of these health centers. You know, I don't know for a fact, but health centers do everything from, you know, death certificates to measles vaccines. So the fact that the reproductive health services that you may be eligible for in existence now, I think would be a very different picture than if you went to a Planned Parenthood clinic. And they're looking to change the focus going to natural family planning, which is archaic.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. And we'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, and that is council members Fall, Reisner, McGee, and Grace.
I could just, the thing that is on the agenda for today, I would like to table. So, because I have
Oh, there's the east park. Yes, thank you so much. Okay. So we're going to table that.
So we will bring it up.
So we're going to move on to Transportation, and that's council members Kotzis, McGee, Grace, and Crowell. And I want to thank council members Butler and McGee for asking the questions about, can a council member in the audience ask a question of a particular committee? And I checked with the law director, and she said that if, you know, the committee chair at the close of that particular committee's discussion can say, "Are there any questions from the audience?" And at that point, the audience includes council members, so they can. And I thank you for asking the questions, and I'm thanking the law director for clarifying that for us.
Okay.
You're on.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Back to our regularly scheduled programming. Transportation Committee, we have two items to discuss today. The first one, West Union Improvements Projects. So this is engineering services that are happening for a project that's going to be happening on West Union. And I'm going to ask the mayor exactly the finer points of some of these improvements that are going to be happening.
Certainly. You know, with this particular project, some of the improvements will be kind of expanding the sidewalks in that area, as well as lighting, and the possibility of a turn lane. We're looking at putting a turn lane in on this, with this project, and possibly having north-south connectivity. We're exploring some possibilities of having a connector between West Union and West State Street because we see an awful lot of impacts in that area. Where, if you think about it, Schaefer is really the closest north-south connector between those two streets as it stands right now, certainly more as you go further east. But with the use that we see in West State Street, ball fields during summer programming, as well as some of the businesses that are, that council has already knows about, that with some business expansion down in the West State Street area, something like that is well worth exploring to see if we can offload some of the impacts or the restrictions in travel through that area. So we're going to be looking at a lot. Again, this is for engineering on this project. I believe this is a little more than $200,000 for this particular piece of legislation for the engineering services. Clerk of council, do you have the actual amount on there? I don't have it in front of me at this point.
It's just a hair lower than that, I think. It's about $193, but it's in that neighborhood, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have any questions? And I can ask if we have questions from the members in the audience? No? Okay. All right. Okay. The second one here, I know a little bit more about this one. This is the Richland Avenue Bridge over Coates Run near the Ohio University Inn and Stop and Cop. And so this is, this is basically putting this out to bid. This is just a hair under $1 million. The total cost of design, engineering, and construction is $990,377. And let me break that down. The city received a, received $685,000, $277 from a municipal bridge program fund. This is from the Federal Highway Administration, administered by ODOT. So this is money that we, that came from the federal government down through the state. City share is going to be $305,100. And this is to replace and actually upgrade the bridge that's currently there on Richland Avenue, right there over Coates Run. The original bridge was built in 1935. Currently, right now, it sits at only 65% of Ohio legal loads. I asked for some clarification on that. So basically, 65% of a 27-ton limit is the current capability. If we didn't do this, we would not be able to have large trucks travel on Richland Avenue. So Jessica Dean also told me, this was in So Jessica Dean also told me, this was in the final communication, let me just look this up here, because I was, I found this kind of interesting, just going back on the history. The city installed that sign, reducing the load limit in 2014. The structure was placed on ODOT's priority list in 2015, and we applied for the grant in 2016. So, excuse me, the, the project would be bid out. We're hoping to see it happen, construction time sometime in 2019, between May and August, when the students are gone. And we will try to, we will keep the traffic open. It will be signalized, just down to one lane of traffic, as they, as they redo each side. For the, for the user, you're not going to see anything taken away or added. There will still be the, the existing road surface and lane width with bike lanes. But, but for trucks, they will be, they'll be happy that they'll be able to traverse this section of the city again. So do we have any questions on this one? Member McGee?
What is the length of time period that they anticipate this would take?
They did not give an actual timeline of how long they believe the project would take. I assume that that would probably be answered by the mayor.
I love how you do that. Yes, Kotzis?
Yes.
As typical, we're going to try and squeeze that into the summer months, when we have the lowest amount of traffic through that area. When I say lowest, we're not going to have Ohio University student body traversing back and forth through there. And Member Kotzis raises a great point, that's good for everyone to know, that we will be maintaining traffic through there. We will signalize one side while the road decking or the bridge decking is being replaced. And then, once that is done, I believe that we're going to start on the, on the southbound lane, the lane that is heading towards the Y, the south Y. And then we will migrate over, once that's completed, to the other side, so the northbound lane will be worked on until completion. But again, we're, we're going to try to squeeze this into the three, almost three months of summer activity that's going on. I should point out that that is also going to be when the RP3 project is underway. There's, it's going to be, like this summer was, it's going to be a tight summer next year, in full disclosure to everyone. There's also projects that are ongoing on campus during that same time, and so I'm relying on campus to manage that while we manage our city rideaway with these projects. So, good question, Member McGee. We're going to push this to be within the confines of the summer months.
Thank you.
I should add, too, that Jessica Dine, as usual, and I'm not sure, but I believe Bob Hetty certainly has been in the loop on this, is to reaching out to the business owners in that area and making sure that they're in, you know, fully informed as to what the schedule is going to be, as is what we typically do with major projects, as we did it with the Stimson Roundabout and other projects in the city. So they'll be informed as well.
Great. And I, you know, and I think about the, the work that we did over this last summer, and I know that we're setting that up for the same type of comments next, next summer. But I do want to, want to tell people to please, you know, please be patient and respectful. And I almost look at, I almost view it as like a, almost like a flu shot. You know, it's something that, you know, you have, there's going to be a lasting effect, and the, the initial pain goes away fairly quickly. So, thank you in advance. So, and with that, that wraps up our transportation. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to go to the podium if you have a question?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisner. Audience member.
You state your name and any affiliations?
I'm Jeff Reisner. Live on 354 Carroll Road, Athens, Ohio 45701. I'm a member of city council, Second Ward. Since this is in the Second Ward, this project have a question. Will there be any modifications to Coates Run channel as they're building this bridge? It's a live stream, there's aquatic life, and so on and so forth. Will there be an impact? Is that being factored into all this?
It is being factored in. As a matter of fact, we spent a lot of time doing an assessment of the pilings that the current bridge sits on, and understanding where those are at, and what, how this project is going to roll forward. But in terms of the channel itself, we're not going to be, you know, scouring the channel or removing any, any of the silting or vegetation that's in there right now. That would require an extensive study, you know, in terms of aquatic life and any disturbance to that. So the answer, the short answer to your question? No. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
And with that, Transportation Committee is, we're finished for this evening. Thank you.
We are. Okay. And there's no need for the finance and personnel, so our next meeting will be Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, Tuesday, September 4th. We'll see you then. Thank you so much.